Good evening and welcome. Tonight is Monday, July 29th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the city, the Minnetoka City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. England, would you please call roll?
Shaq, here.
Wilburn, here.
Calvert, here.
Remaley, here.
Coakley, here.
Foster Bolton, here.
Weersum.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. I believe there is no addenda, so I think we're in good shape. Mr. Funk?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, City Council. You are correct. There is no addenda for tonight's meeting, so the agenda is presented as submitted.
Excellent. It's been the first time in a while that we've done that. So is there, is there a motion? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the agenda.
Is there a second? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Shaq. Ms. England, please call roll.
Shaq, yes.
Wilburn, yes.
Calvert, yes.
Remaley, yes.
Coakley, yes.
Foster Bolton, yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes. We have one set. That is the July 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Any comments or a motion? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the July 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Councilmember Coakley?
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert, a second by Councilmember Coakley. Ms. England, please call roll.
Shaq, yes.
Wilburn, yes.
Calvert, yes.
Remaley, yes.
Coakley, yes.
Foster Bolton, yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is a special matters, and we have one item, number 6A, is the Strategic Profile Quarter Two Report. And Mr. Funk, that's your report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Good evening again. Tonight, I'm going to spend just a few minutes going through our Quarter Two Strategic Profile Report. Again, this stems back to the strategic profile that was created a couple of years ago, and then every year we do a refresh. And so we are in 2024. We do mirror calendar year, as you know. I do restate that for those that may be listening. And with our Quarter Two Report, again, that takes us through the end of July, excuse me, the end of June. And so with tonight, I'm going to just spend some time going through some highlights, and we're going to highlight six of the strategic profile areas. Again, it's not a full breadth of our work, so please keep that in mind. There was a report in your packet, and for anyone, again, that might be listening, that report is in tonight's packet. It's about a 30-page report. A couple of years ago, we had those a little bit longer. They're closer to 60 pages, which really give, give you as a council and for our residents a really deep, deep data into really the body of work that is being done here at the city. We've tried to condense it away to make it more user-friendly. Again, we've got about 30 pages, and even for tonight, I'm really going to keep it even more high level than that, really just covering a couple of the major highlights from each of the six strategic profile areas. And with that, I'd like to just kick it off with tonight's report, and then at the end of it, I would look for a motion to accept the report. Really, just then, starting off with our mission statement is to provide quality services while striving to preserve and enhance distinctive character to make Minnetoka a special place for everyone. And then our vision statement is Minnetoka is an inclusive community committed to excellence, where all residents, workers, and visitors are welcomed in a beautiful, sustainable place supported by quality, dependable services. And I really just pause there quickly just to mention that our vision statement and our mission statement is really what drives our purpose. And so it's really, that is the framework of our strategic profile, and everything hinges off of both the vision and mission statement that I just alluded to. And then our guiding principles, again, this was developed a couple of years ago, and I won't read through all four of these bullet points, but really just would highlight a couple of the bolded areas. And our guiding principles are, again, is really what sustains our work and really what, again, is, again, part of our framework in how we provide services. And that is, in that first bullet point, it talks about a beautiful, sustainable, and healthy environment. We responsibly deliver excellent public services and provide affordable opportunities. We ethically uphold community trust through proactive, inclusive public engagement. And then we also try to then lead our city nimbly into the future, and we look at innovations, at technologies, best practices, partnerships, all part of making sure that we're an efficient and effective city as, again, we look more futuristic in the years to come. Again, then, now we just really start diving into the strategic plan itself. I know, Council, you've seen this a lot, but again, worth, worth noting to those that might be listening, that our plan, we call it a three-level plan, and for our, tonight's purposes, we're going to talk about our six strategic priorities, and again, I'll highlight those. Those six strategic priorities are supported by 21 key strategies, and we'll touch on those as well. And then, from a staff perspective, how we operationalize that is we have developed 95 action steps. Those were approved by the council at the first meeting in January. So again, this is not new to you, City Council, because after the Quarter One, you did receive a Quarter One Report here earlier this year, and tonight, we're verbalizing now that we're halfway through the year. And then just overall, we are on track. And so halfway through the year, we're at 50% of our progress, so we are tracking well. So that takes into consideration all of those action steps and all of the key strategies and how we're holding ourselves accountable and, and our goal of being outcomes-focused here at the city. And with our 50% progress, we further break that down into what's on track. So 70% of our work is on track, 23% of it is completed. There is some major disruption in, in our workload, and I'll allude to those here throughout the presentation. We're going into our six key strategies. The first one is financial strength and operational excellence. Darren Nelson is our finance director. He's our team lead, and he has a team of staff that work with him on this. It's defined there on the slide. Again, I won't read through the definition of it, but financial strength and operational excellence is what it says, and that's where we are committed to a long-term positive financial position. As we look at financial strength and operational excellence, we're at 66% completed. We're on track to finish the rest of that remaining 16%. And then you see that major disruption. That's really where a lot of the major disruption was on that previous slide. It really relates to the conversion of our ERP system, and so that is on pause. That was one of our major projects this year, and just given some of the, some of the concerns we're having during that transition, we're pausing that project, and that's reflective in that red bar that you see here under financial strength and operational excellence. So that says 16% on that, and I go back to that previous slide. When totality with all six pillars, you see that disruption in that, that 3% and 4% range. So that's how that balances out in the, in the whole equation. As we look at the three key strategies, as I mentioned, there are 21 key strategies that support our six major pillars. The three key strategies in financial strength and operational excellence is to maintain the city's AAA bond rating, develop an annual budget that meets community needs, and then provide excellent, meaningful programs and amenities to serve and enhance our community. Now, tonight, I won't read through all the metrics, but we do have 60 metrics that do support all of this work. Those are on our website as well. So anything I'm sharing here this evening or anything in the staff report is on our website, so we do have a robust dashboard, and I'll point to that here at the end of the, at the end of my comments, but I won't go through all the performance metrics tonight. I'll really just touch on one key one for each of these major pillars. So those are the three key strategies. Some of the Quarter Two highlights as it relates to financial strength and operational excellence is we conducted the recreational facility study, and, Council, you know, we had that report here a couple of months ago. We're related to the Marsh Wilson Fitness Center, Community Center, and Glen Lake Activity Center. We had a retreat this spring back in April. We worked with Hennepin County to administer county commissioners, special, general, and primary elections, so we had some election activity this year. And then back in February 21st, we affirmed the city's AAA bond rating. So that was an important distinction and really is key to the city's financial success. And then the last couple of months in our study session, we have turned to our budget, and as we looked at our capital improvement plan and our economic improvement plan, those have been to you here this last June. And as I mentioned, one of the major challenges in that disruptor is the ERP and our Human Resources Management Plan and Implementation is currently on hold. At some point, staff will be coming back with an update to you and a more robust discussion I anticipate yet this year. One of the metrics that we use and one of the key metrics, again, one of the 60 as relates to financial health, is our fund balance. And so we do track a number of things related to the city's finances. This is one where we want to make sure we're 30%, and these, this graph indicates that we are, and so we're, again, very financially healthy, and that's certainly something we want to highlight and showcase to our residents. Next is moving on to safe and healthy community. We're on 80% on track and 16%, almost 17% completed regarding safe and healthy community. Again, I won't read through the definitions. Four key strategies to identify and adapt to public safety service models that support evolving changes in service delivery expectations. We're looking at to identify safety strategies and practices that promote quality of life for everyone, collaborative reviewing our integrated police and fire policies and training protocols, and making changes in those regards. And then this is where we do place a, some of our recreational strategies is to provide a full range of recreational program, services, and amenities, and that's part of that, that well-being of our community. Some of the Q2 highlights in this pillar is really looking at those public safety service models. A lot of credit to Chief Vance and to Chief Fox as they've looked at a number of operational efficiencies as we look to migrate to that more full-time fire department and just the relationship between those two departments, and, and certainly a lot of activity on how they're coordinating our EMS delivery here in the city. And there's certainly, as noted below, that's one of our challenges, too. So while we've made some good, some good headway in how we deliver EMS services, there's still a number of challenges regarding EMS services, and that'll be also part of, I think, a legislative discussion as we go into next year, and certainly in December's study session, we talk about 2025 legislative priorities. I think this will be certainly a conversation that will come up at that time. Also looking at, or also performed some development and implementation of the comprehensive strategies for police recruitment. That's always been a challenge, and I think you've heard Chief Borbom talk about some of the recruitment strategies that they've implemented here this last quarter. We're also looking at further collaboration in police and fire on responses, and I think I've talked to a few council members about a, a new team that they're forming, which is called a, they haven't quite named it yet, but an alternative response team where it is a, a pool of employees that, that consists of police, fire, mental health, and really looking at how we deploy resources differently, given different search situations to yield better outcomes. So that work is in progress. And then last, certainly, the continued conversion of our facility, implementation of our facility study and further hiring of the folks that we had scheduled for this year. I already talked about one of the challenges, and then certainly EMS is, is at the top of that list. Couple of the metrics there pointed out, both with our quality and police services. This is pulled out of our community survey, so we do take a look. One of the measures in our annual community survey is the police service and how residents view our EMS delivery. Both of our police and fire, certainly very highly rated between excellent and good. They continue to exceed the 90% calculation between excellent and good, and that's certainly a strong indicator of ensuring that we are meeting, whoops, excuse me, sorry about that, hit the wrong button, meeting the goals as outlined in our safe and healthy pillar. Moving on then, whoops, too many buttons in front of me here. Moving on to a third strategic priority is sustainability and natural environment. I'll read that definition, is which is supporting long and short-term initiatives that lead to the protection enhancement of our unique natural environment while mitigating climate change impacts. So certainly an important strategy here at the city. Three, three key strategies are carefully balanced growth and development with preservation efforts that protect the highly valued water and woodland resources of our, excuse me, of our community, develop and implement long-term plans to mitigate threats to water, equality, ecosystems, urban forests, and the unique natural character of Minnetoka. Then last, take and act a role in promoting energy and water conservation, sustainable operations and infrastructure, recycling, and environmental stewardship. There are three identified performance metrics on the right-hand side, and again, those will be more highlighted as we get to the year end. We'll have more year-end numbers for you on those, but I'll highlight one of the key metrics in a second. Couple of highlights worth pointing out is really regard, related to, you know, I'll jump really kind of second point, because I think, second bullet point, because I think that encapsulates everything really well, and that is progress continues on all the planning efforts related to the park habitat restoration, our forest management, which is including our management of EAB, lake water quality improvements, excuse me, and stormwater pollution prevention. So there's a lot of things that are staff, that are happening at a staff level as it relates to also development applications. Our staff is actively involved with Ms. Wischnack and our Development Review Team, really just ensuring that our natural resources are protected even with development review projects and development projects. And then that third bullet point references a community forest management plan is underway and will be likely finalized for adoption later this year. So our staff has started that, so kind of a heads up for you this evening. You will see that coming back to you, and that's part of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So our staff, again, is working on a forest management plan. I know that's, I think, an interest to all of us and what that's going to look like in the coming years. And then on, worth noting, on June 1st, the city partnered with Hennepin County and Better Futures, providing building material donation as part of the city's Spring Special Community Drop-Off Day at Public Works. So kind of a fun, fun thing that staff initiated on that front. One of the metrics, again, we point back to the community survey, and we asked residents about the quality of our natural environment, again, which is a significant indicator of how we're doing with this category. Between our excellent and good, we are just hovering a little over that 90%. So again, community members look at the work that we're doing with our natural environment and at this point are signaling to us, and which has been consistent over the years, that we're doing, doing very well on that front. Moving on to livable and well-planned development, and I should just back up with and recognize, I was going to say livable and well-planned development, is Julie Wischnack, who's our team lead on this initiative. I should point back to the previous sustainability and natural environment is led by Leslie Yekka, our Natural Resources Manager, and then I alluded to with safe community and well-being is Chief Fox and Chief Borbom. So my apologies, I missed that. Moving back then to livable and well-planned development, which is a balanced community-wide interest and respect Minnetoka's unique neighborhoods while continuing community investment. If you look at this, we're about 84% on track, 7% to 8% completed. There's a little disruption. Of course, that's true with all of our departments. There's always little things that cause us to slow up on some, some initiatives, but for the most part, again, we're tracking really well. Some of the three key strategies are implement programs and policies, diversify housing, increase affordable housing options, support business retention and expansion, and attract new businesses. This is a second key strategy. And then last, manage and promote the OPUS area as a unique mix of uses and increased development reinvestment. Again, we have performance measures that are noted on the right-hand side of this graph, and I'll point to one of the more significant ones here in a minute. Some of the Quarter Two highlights, again, a lot of things noted here and related to the work that Julie and her team are doing. Ones, a couple that, that pop out are the promoted home improvement and down payment assistance loans through the city's newsletter and social media. We launched the rental registry program to ensure the rental registry owners and managers to register with the city. So that was a project that started early in the year, but really came to full development here, and Julie reported that, Ms. Wischnack reported that to you at the last study session. We are monitoring the state's $1 billion funding for housing. So last year, last legislative session was a big year for state funding, so certainly our staff is monitoring opportunities and ways to invest in how that might align with our priorities. So that does take some time on our part to ensure that we're maximizing any programs that have been created through the state. We're also looking to work with Elevate Hennepin for business advising, and so we have been doing that, and we do have continued interest in that arena, and so ensuring that we're working with Hennepin County and making sure that our businesses and those that are interested in operating business in the city have all the resources available. And then, as you know, this last year, the bullet above, above that was partnering with the Greater Wayzetta Area Chamber Commerce for the 2024 Minnetoka Business Council Series. So that's new this year. We've had a couple of those, and those have been very successful with superb attendance from our business community. And then there's a note in there about public art, so that continues to be a focus. And then last, we completed the evaluation of barriers in the zoning ordinance to ensure the city's vision can be achieved. So that's the, really signifies the work that we're doing with Zone, excuse me, with ZoneCo. Some of the metrics, and again, I won't touch on these very long because you saw these last Monday at your study session, so with our affordable housing goals, noted there is our 2021 to 2030 affordable housing goals. We're meeting those targets, and in fact, we're exceeding them on new affordable units. So again, I think that's good work being done by the city. And then that bottom chart really points to more owner occupied versus rental. So we have noted there the Habitat Mills Church area, homes within reach activity, and then Applewood Point. And then the next slide related to metrics, I know it's really tough to see. This is something that Ms. Wischnack covered again last Monday, and this really illustrates all the affordable housing rental units that have been constructed in the city within the last, I think it's five years, if I correct Ms. Wischnack, something like that, but a little bit longer. So again, kind of illustrating the movement in meeting our affordable housing goals. Moving on to our fourth pillar, which is infrastructure and asset management. Will Manchester, our Public Works Director, is the lead with his team. We're at 10% complete, 90% on track. Part of infrastructure and asset management is to provide safe, efficient, sustainable, and cost-effective infrastructure and transportation systems. Just maybe jump ahead to the metrics, and really we track a couple of things. One is ensuring that our roads are at a rating of 80%. That's on a scale of 100, and so that's something that we achieve. And then we also measure how many new miles of, of trails are constructed, so that's part of our infrastructure. And from 2020 through 2024, we've added five miles of new trails, so that is a cumulative total. We're up over, I think we're close to about 110 miles of new trails now, is that correct, Will? Very close to that. Bouncing back then to the key strategies is provide and preserve a quality local street and trail system. So again, goes to the maintenance and maintenance of 80%, like I mentioned, on roads, and then our trail system measurement. And then second bullet point is ensure connectivity through increased access to local and regional means of transportation, develop an annual capital improvement plan that supports sustainable maintenance and replacement of assets, and then expand and maintain a trail system to improve safe connectivity and walkability through the community. Again, four key strategies, some of the highlights, there are four noted here on this slide. One is that we continue to plan and construct the city's local street and trail system and, and maintain a payment convention index rating of 80%. I've talked about that already. Staff continues to work on increased access through local and regional means, partnerships, programming improvements. And so I, I know our staff has been working with Hennepin County, Met Council, and other stakeholders to ensure that we have, again, those resources available to us. We have prepared the 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan. That's been to you at a recent study session, and that also includes the sustainable maintenance and replacement of those assets. And then last, we're in the middle of the Hopkins Crossroad Trail, which is near I-394 that's under construction and been going really, really well. Certainly, there's always construction challenges, but overall, it's, it's exciting. We've got a lot of great compliments from the neighborhood, and I know the neighborhood is excited for that to be done for a lot of reasons. And then last, community inclusiveness. Miranda Domon, our Assistant City Manager, leads this group. We're at 76%, 77% on track, around 23% completed. Again, we anticipate getting to 100% complete with all of our pillars. And with community inclusiveness, the definition is to create a community that is engaged, tolerant, and compassionate about everyone, embrace and respect diversity, and to create a community that uses different perspectives and experiences to build an inclusive and equitable city for all. Some of the four key strategies are develop and implement inclusive recruiting, application, hiring, and retention practices to attract excellent, qualified, and diverse candidates from all backgrounds, actively engage the community by working collaboratively to broaden policy outcomes, and to respond to community needs, views, and expectations, foster an inclusive boards and commissions, recruitment and appointment process to increase diversity, and then last, remove identical barriers to create equal opportunity for accessing programs and service, excuse me, services. Some of the highlights, the first one there is, is very notable, which is the DEI Commission. So there have been two meetings, so our commission's often running, and that's exciting, so really appreciate the work of Miranda Domon, and of course, Jase Alexander, a senior DEI coordinator on that. We do have a chair and vice chair were recently selected at their last meeting. The second bullet point really highlights the work in partnership with the city of Hopkins and YCMA Ridgedale with our first inaugural pride event that was held on July 13th at Ridgedale Commons. We've also been cooperating and collaborating with Hopkins in our ACE intern program, so we had five ACE, five ACE interns this last quarter. And then we've been, part of one of our strategies is making sure we have a significant presence at job fairs. And so our staff has, our HR staff has attended several career fairs, I think 11 of them this last spring, including Hopkins High School, Edina High School, and the People of Color Career Fair. So again, we're very actively engaged in reaching out through diverse means. And then additionally, we've created a DEI toolkit. So it's an internal type toolkit that we're using. We're emphasizing, it's not only a toolkit, but then we also did some training internally for hiring. So for all of our hiring managers, we, HR has performed training emphasizing on different techniques and bias awareness and a number of different factors. And then last, the City Clerk Department has also updated our election binders with materials in 10 alternative languages, so even our, and we think of elections, there is diverse voters in our, in our community, so they're working through making sure that all voters have the ability to come and vote and be successful and have a good experience on Election Day. So that's some, and then last metrics, again, one of the things that we do track is our employees of color. We're at 91%, we have 91% white, and then around 10, 9% people of color. That is a higher ratio than from a year ago, so we're, we're again, tracking that, and we're, that's part of all the efforts in creating also a workplace that represents our community. Last I'll just mention is that with our dashboard, I mentioned this earlier, our dashboard is found on our website. You can, residents can find it a couple of different places. One of those, you can go to our website, our city, and then on the, I think it's on the right hand. Where did it go? Oh, excuse me, there, on our city, on the very left-hand side, about Minnetoka, the second one down the strategic profile. But again, it could be accessed a couple of different ways. That's one way a resident can find it. And then last, this is, again, the dashboard, and another way to get there, there is under our city, you can click into our website and find all the information that I quickly went through and volumes of, of metrics that I mentioned, that we have over 60 metrics in our dashboard, all sorts of data, and residents can find, again, deeper dive into much of what I shared with you here this evening. So with that, Council, I'll end there. Answer any questions you may have. Appreciate your support with our strategic plan. As I alluded to earlier, it is our guide. That's the way we hold ourselves accountable. We are an outcomes-focused team here at the city, and so with our strategic plan and the work and collaboration with staff and council, we're on track. Happy to report that we're halfway through the year and looking forward to giving you a year-end report, where we'll tie everything together in January of 2025. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. And, Council, any questions? I mean, you certainly covered a lot of territory quickly, so thank you for that. But any comments or questions from Council?
No, we were not, we were not shocked with anything we saw. You know, you've been, staff's done a good job of keeping the council apprised of, you know, the progress, and, and clearly, as you indicated, the, that our strategic plan is our guide, and we refer to it frequently as we work through things as a city. So this year, summary was really good. We'll look forward to the second half summary in, in January, but we're not trying to wish the summer away or anything like that, so.
Thank you very much. So, next item on the agenda after special matters is reports from city manager and council members. So back to you, Mr. Funk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I get the microphone for some time tonight, so thank you. I'll be brief with this as well. Oh. Oh.
Let's see, well, I'm not sure.
That is correct. Thank you, Councilmember Calvert.
Okay, excuse me, I jumped ahead.
I did start off with asking the Council to accept the report at the conclusion, so if we could, Mayor and Council, look for a motion.
All right, I will seek a motion for, to accept the report, and I'm, Councilmember Calvert, is that you who wanted to do that?
Thank you, Mayor. I make the motion to accept the strategic profiled Quarter Two Report.
And Councilmember Wilburn?
Now, second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Wilburn. Ms. England, please call roll.
Shaq, yes.
Wilburn, yes.
Calvert, yes.
Remaley, yes.
Coakley, yes.
Foster Bolton, yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. And now, next item is reports from city manager and council members. Mr. Funk, one more time.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief. I have, I think, five items to share with you. This really, I think, complements what I was talking about with the strategic plan. Just a real intense body of work, and really proud of our staff with the work that they Just a real intense body of work and really proud of our staff with the work that they do here, Monday through Fridays throughout the year. So a couple of things worth noting, one is Dale Gronberg. I think maybe many of you know Dale, he's our building official. Mr. Gronberg recently won the Herb Meyer Award, and this is award given to outstanding building officials who work to improve the professionalism of code officials and the quality of code enforcement in Minnesota. So Dale was recognized for that award. It was noted that he has an ability to engage with people to obtain code compliance for construction projects for the city as a true talent of his. So he works with a lot of challenging situations, and he works really well with the public. And Ms. Wishnak informed me that he won this award, and so we're very pleased that Mr. Gronberg represents the city well, as with many of our staff members. So congratulations to Mr. Gronberg. Next I want to mention Hannibal Hayes is one of our city forester. He was instrumental in receiving the 2024 Healthy Tree Canopy Grant. And so we were just awarded, I believe, I don't know how much I was awarded. Do you know Mr. Manchester?
I don't.
Oh, we'll get back to with more details on how much the award was, but we did receive a grant. And I know, I think, council, you're aware that our focus has been in grant writing the last couple of years, and Hannibal Hayes was instrumental in writing that grant. The contract is set to begin August 1st of 2024 and end July 31st, 2025. Once we have some more details about how that will be programmed, we'll certainly inform you of that. Next, I want to mention that Jew Ingelson in Community Development wrote a grant and received $48,000 for a Local Climate Action Award. And this will allow the city to offer free Home Energy Squad visits through our programming, which will in turn increase our participation. So really appreciate the work of Mr. Ingelson at Community Development with his work on attaining that grant. And then also want to mention with our communications team, they did receive an award this last week from the Minnesota Association of Governmental Communications for two awards. One is a silver award for the design of their, of our annual report. So they, we've made a new annual report and dressed that up the last couple of years, and so they were recognized for that effort. And then they also received a Northern Lights Award for the 24 hours in the city of Minnetoka. So it was a social media campaign that showed how the city works around the clock, and I think many of you probably saw that here this last year with their work. And so really appreciate their communications team and congratulations to them for the two awards they received. And then last thing I want to mention, and I think Ms. Wishnak alluded to this at last Monday's study session, but again, worth noting that in an effort to reach new and diverse audiences, the department collaborated with communications to design a new Communication Connection Newsletter. And this is being distributed to multi-unit property managers who in turn share with their, with our tenants. I know that's been something that council has stressed in recent years, is how do we continue to reach all segments of our community? And certainly, it's always been a challenge to reach tenants and renters, and so this is a project that is, has been instrumental. And this, since it first went out, the newsletter was opened electronically more than 150 times, which is again, above average for a lot of the communications that we push out. So really thank our Julie Wishnak and our communications team for that initiative. So with that, Mayor and Council, turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk, and well done to our team for some pretty significant accomplishments. And so congratulations and well done to each of the individuals cited. And I think the fact that we, we talk about reaching for excellence and pursuing excellence, I think this is demonstration of that. So thanks very much. Council members, anything that you'd like to report? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of meetings that I attended. One was on the 15th, actually, and it was the sort of kickoff to considering resolutions for the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. So we go through all the resolutions, sort of where they stand legislatively at the national level, and people are able to, you know, propose new resolutions, massage old ones. And so we're, we're in the midst of, you know, kicking that off. And then I also attended the League of Minnesota Cities First Summer Improving Services Delivery Committee meeting, and that was a similar exercise where we sort of review all of the resolutions. And for those who aren't familiar with that committee, it has to do with every kind of service that cities provide from elections to public safety and, and utilities and everything else. So there's a wide variety of topics, and we are just getting underway. And now have an idea of sort of what, what passed, what didn't pass. And one thing has become obvious, which is that our legislators have a responsibility to pass some bonding bills. So hope that for those of you listening at home, you can help us put some pressure on them to do their jobs. So, so anyway, covered a wide variety of topics, starting to wrap our heads around what we want to bring to the state and federal legislature on a wide variety of topics. And I am so glad I'm on those committees once again.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert. Other reports from council members? All right, I'll, I've got a couple of things to comment on. I also am part of a policy committee. The Fiscal Futures Policy Committee for the League had its first meeting last week, and Darren Nelson, our, our Finance Director, is the co-chair of that policy committee. And the one, the thing that stood out to me that was quite interesting is, we know that last year, not this most recent session, but the session before, the legislature made a lot of money available for housing. And, but then in this past legislative session, we, there were some, there were some bills that, that preempted city, that were proposed that didn't pass. But the interesting thing is that with all of the funding that exists from the state and with the new sales tax and everything, even though this was the Fiscal Futures, more of a financially oriented policy committee, with all of that money in the system, housing has kind of risen to the fore, not that there is a separate housing policy committee, but there is going to be a lot of work between those two committees because the state has, has voted a lot of money to go to housing, and not all of that has been determined how that's going, where it's going to go and how it's going to be spent. And so there's, I think, more than one policy committee is going to be looking at housing issues and utilizing the money from the state to, to optimize and use that money efficiently to, to encourage more housing. So it's, it's important and glad to be on that committee, and it's, it's pretty interesting. And let's see, the other thing I want to say is just jumping back to the, the strategic profile. You know, I think it's, when I, when we, when we have these reviews, you know, we do from time to time hear from residents and say, well, why isn't government more like, more like business? I mean, business is more efficient, you know, and, and we hear that, there's a common critique of government. Well, I'm proud to say that Minnetoka really takes a strong business-like approach, and we do measure our performance, and we do hold ourselves accountable. And our strategic profile is an indication of that. And I don't want to sound defensive, but I think it's really important to point that out because, you know, you frequently, you, you hear from residents who are upset with something about the city, and they say, well, if you ran it like a business, you'd be doing a better job. I think we do a pretty darn good job of running our city like a business, and we do hold ourselves accountable. So I just wanted to circle back and thank, thank staff for that good work because it's really an important point, and it's often overlooked when, when people kind of go with conventional wisdom that, well, business is, business is efficient, but government isn't. I think we do a pretty good job of being efficient.
And judging by all the awards that were just announced by Mr. Funk, which I neglected to acknowledge, I mean, it just kind of underscores what you're saying, Mayor, and I'm very grateful for our staff because there's a reason they win awards, and we're very lucky to have them all. And also buried in that strategic profile were a lot of communications. You, you talked about some awards that our communication staff won, but there's a lot of that buried in there, and I know that they are the little engine that could, so.
So thank you, Councilmember Calvert. So I will, we'll leave it at that, but I just thought it was worth circling back on that point. So anything else from council members, or we'll move on? So next item on the agenda is citizens wishing to discuss matters not on the agenda. So this is an open mic opportunity. I'm not seeing a lot of people in the audience, but if anyone wants to say anything about something that is not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address, and we're interested to hear what you have to say. But seeing no one, we will move on. Item nine is bids and purchases, and we have none of those. So that brings us to the consent agenda. And our consent agenda are items that are typically routine, so we don't act on the items individually. We, I will read them into the record, and we will vote on them collectively with one motion and one vote. However, if someone would like to pull an item, please indicate by raising your hand and that you would like to pull it, then we will consider the items that have not been pulled, and then we'll circle back to the item that is pulled for any conversation on that, and then we'll vote on that separately. So item 10A is a resolution supporting the appointment of a board manager to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Board. And I will just add that that is Brian Kirk, a resident who was a former council member. So that is item 10A. And then item 10B is a resolution relating to settlements in the Aquius Film Forming Foam AFFF Multi-District Litigation Number 2873. So would anybody like to pull, anyone? Councilmember Calvert?
I just want to pull 10B, mostly a comment and mostly a comment, but a possible question.
All right, very good. Anyone else like to pull anything else? Or is there a motion for 10A? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm of approval of consent agenda item 10A.
And is there a second? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. England, please call roll.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. So that brings us to item 10B, and Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. For those who aren't familiar with A-T triple F firefighting foams, they are in the PFOS family. They are extremely toxic. And so this is mostly comment and maybe a question. So this has to do with us opting in or opting out of a legal settlement. And the, the packet does mention that there are, you know, many companies that are in a variety of lawsuits. Many of them are going to settle, and it seems like a lot of money. I think this was over three quarters of a billion dollars, but it's actually just spit in the ocean because these are national lawsuits. And the amount of money it takes to treat water, first of all, there's not, there's not really a great way of removing AAAF from water sources or anything else at this time or any other PFOS chemicals. There's a reason they're called forever chemicals. And so it's very hard to remove from, from the environment. And the amount, I mean, we probably could use that amount ourselves over time if we are contaminated with A-T triple F chemicals. And so I just wanted to let the public know that, you know, these, these companies have deep pockets, you know, 3M settled for a lot of money because it benefits them. And so my question is, I, I'm not opposed to opting into the settlement, but, you know, in the scheme of things, I just wonder if we're shortchanging by, by as municipalities altogether not standing firm and, and continuing to fight the companies to pony up more money because they made the problem and we're left to clean it up as municipalities. So I think it's a hard question to answer, but I, I just wonder if we're shortchanging ourselves. And I, you know, it's, it's a hard question to answer.
So, any other thoughts on that? You know, I was going to ask staff just related to that because from time to time, we do have these class action suits that we can sign up or not sign up. And I don't know if Ms. Heine would like to make a comment on the challenges of going it alone or going it alone outside of class action, if you have any thoughts on that? Because it's clearly not definitive, and we don't, they don't, by signing up, we don't say, well, we're going to get X number of dollars. We're going to be part of a pool, and depending how many cities are in the pool, it's going to determine how much money we ultimately get, which could be quite a bit or not that much. And I think Councilmember Calvert makes a, makes a, a good point, but I'm not sure we have a better option. But Ms. Heine?
So, to clarify, this, there are hundreds of lawsuits that have been filed all around the country in the federal courts. The federal courts have consolidated all of those lawsuits into a single multi, multi-district litigation, which has this assigned number of 2873. And each of those settlements, so far, there have now been two that have been approved by the court. There are two now that are pending, which is the reason why we brought this resolution to you. We anticipate that there will be other settlements in the future, probably less. 3M and DuPont probably will contribute more than anyone else because they were major manufacturers. But so why we're bringing this to you is, to date, every one of the settlements that has come through has been structured similarly. And the city does not opt in to the settlement. The city has to opt out if it does not want to participate. If the city does nothing, the city is automatically included in the settlement. There is an automatic release of claims as provided by the settlement agreement. Every one of these settlement agreements has provided the opportunity to object and say, we don't like this settlement. And to do that, you have to incur legal fees and appear in court and make an objection. So it provides that opportunity to object to the settlement. It also has the opportunity to opt out, meaning you won't participate in the settlement. You don't release any claims, but you don't get any money either. And that takes an affirmative step. But doing nothing includes you, and you get the money, but you have a release. So because they've all been structured this way, and because to date, when we have met in closed session with the council, the council did not want to object with respect to 3M and DuPont, the council did not object, did not direct us to object, did not direct us to opt out. So we're bringing this forward and saying, rather than hold a closed session every time one of these settlements come forward, we're going to handle these all in the same way unless you tell us you want to handle it differently. So we're putting it back to you. We'll inform you every time there's a settlement proposed, and we will give you the dates for objecting or opting out. And then it's up to you as council members to say, I think we need to discuss this. And then we will hold it in closed session. And if we have a closed session, then I can provide the risks and, and costs of litigation versus the potential benefits.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Heine. Are there any other questions? I think you did a nice job of explaining. So, Councilmember Calvert?
So just one more comment. One of the reasons why PFOS actually even became sort of known in the general public in the last few years is because especially A-T triple F firefighting foams were required by the federal government to be used at airports and on naval vessels, and, and to a certain extent, still are. And it is because our first responders and service members were getting cancer at a disproportionate rate in areas where the drinking water was contaminated, that it became an issue at the National League of Cities. And it is actually because of the National League of Cities on my committee that we really got the ball rolling in conjunction with military communities, the scientific community, academia. And, and so it is literally this very substance that sort of got the ball rolling on PFOS nationally because it, it literally affects the, the, the most important people in our society, the people that keep us safe. So I, I understand what Ms. Heine's saying, and I also see that the deadline for filing an objection is August 24th, which gives us precious little time. And so I just wanted to make sure that... And so I just wanted to make sure that people out in the public understand sort of how this works, and I feel like municipalities are being held hostage by companies with big money that made their profits selling chemicals that had some benefit, but a lot of also terrible effects on our environment.
Thank you. Anything else, councilmembers? Would someone like to make a motion on this? I mean, I think this is, I think Ms. Heine laid it out well, that, and with the August 24th deadline. I mean, it's like, well, here are your options, and, you know, maybe there are no good options, but there's probably, you know, there's reality. Councilmember Shack?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I mean, without getting into the attorney-client privilege that, we talked about this at length in the study session, and there are a lot of really compelling reasons not to use city resources to chase after money that we're probably not going to get because of our circumstances here in Minnetoka. And so I totally understand the issue and the concerns that Councilmember Calvert is raising, but I, you know, to use a legal turn of phrase, I don't want to relitigate this every time it comes up because unless something changes with our circumstances or the, you know, what the settlement situation is, it's not a good use of our time, I think, to have that conversation over and over again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I mean, I just...
Councilmember Foster Bolton?
Thank you, sorry. I agree, and I agree with Councilmember Shack, but I do think that relitigating, and I get your point, where relitigating it every single time makes the public, it comes to the forefront of our minds, like, and that we need to keep being reminded that this is what these big companies with all this big money did to these very important people. And I mean, I think that, you know, not that nothing, you know, it's going to change or anything, but I get it, and I get that it needs to be that big of a deal all the time to keep remembering what they did, and because what they did was terrible, and this is a small price that they're paying for that. So, I mean, I just want to reiterate that. I agree. I think...
One of the things, when I talked to Mr. Funk today, the thing about PFOS, and it's not just specifically this AFFF, this foam, you know, one of the reasons it was required was that it's really good at fighting fires, but it's really toxic. And, you know, there's a lot of problems all over, and I know Ann Burt, who is the mayor of Woodbury, and Woodbury is putting a water treatment plant, a system in to remove PFOS from the PFOS that's in their city drinking water. And so when I talked to Mr. Funk today, you know, I had a specific question on, well, I know we're testing for PFOS in our water, and he said, yes, we are, and we are well below any limits, so we're in good shape now. But one of the questions that I had was that should we be educating our public on how to avoid PFOS? I mean, for example, I have this really, you know, expensive pan I use to make eggs that I bought at Menards on Black Friday for $4.99. It's a very expensive pan, but it's non-stick, and that's Teflon, and Teflon is loaded with PFOS. Okay, well, am I exposing myself to PFOS, and what's the implication of that? Are there things that we can do to be smarter consumers to avoid these substances in our environment? And we're not going to go there tonight, but those are the types of questions that I want to ask because I think there's both an education aspect to this, and, you know, we want to be very mindful of the condition of our water. So, you know, I think, as we've said, we've discussed this at length. I think approving this tonight is the right thing, but to the points being made by my fellow councilmembers, let's not lose our diligence on this, and let's not say, well, it's a one-and-done thing, and we move on. This is a significant issue, and we are going to be facing this issue time and time again as we go forward, and let's help our residents be more intelligent and learn how to protect themselves, and maybe you shouldn't buy a $4.99 frying pan on Black Friday at Menards, but I did. So anyway, is there a motion, Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you. I want to thank my fellow councilmembers and staff for indulging me on this, and I make the motion to adopt the resolution on A triple F firefighting foam litigation.
Is there a second? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. England, please call roll.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is consent agenda items requiring five votes. We have none of those. Item 12 is introduction of ordinances. We have none of those. So that brings us to public hearings, item 13, and we have a continuation of the public hearing that was opened on June 24, 2024. And so this is for an on-sale intoxicating and Sunday-on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Super Yummy Tasty Food LLC, doing business as Forked at 1641 Plymouth Road. And I believe, Ms. Wischnack, that's your report.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. It is for the restaurant called Forked. As you know, it's the same ownership as Batio, which is just on the upper level of the spot that they're proposing to go in, the former Champs and the former Wine Side location. Just reading from your staff report, just to help you understand how many, what the timeframes are, Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They expect to have about 20 full-time employees and 40 part-time employees. They would use the Serve Safe Alcohol Advantage program. They expect their food ratio and liquor ratios to be 65 to 35%. And we did have the investigative report from the police department. No findings were made on the background for the ownership. With that, Mayor, we would recommend approval of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. Council, any questions for staff on this item? All right, seeing none. This public hearing is open, and I see the applicant here. You're not required to come up and say any words, you did at the last meeting, but if you have anything to say, please come and say it. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments? I'm not seeing anyone, so I will be bold, and I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to council for comment, discussion, or a motion. Councilmember Shack?
Thank you, Mayor. Excited to have the space open again, and I will make the motion to approve the liquor license for Super Yummy Tasty Food LLC.
And second by Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shack and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. Remaley, excuse me, Ms. England, please call roll.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. I just want to point out that I do know all of you. It's just that when I look down the line, I kind of mix it up a little bit, so I apologize for that. So motion carries, and I want to say welcome. We're looking forward to having you open, and, you know, when you have an opening date, please be sure to let us know, and we'll mention it at a council meeting, and hopefully we can get you a few customers here.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Welcome. So item 14 is other business. We have none. Item 15 is appointments and reappointments. We have none, so the last item is adjournment, and Councilmember Wilburn?
I move adjournment.
Is there a second? Councilmember Remaley?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Remaley. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.